At six o'clock at this time, I'll call the regular meeting for Perry City Council Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, before please. We have a call. Item three is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you're able, please rise. I'd like to call on Councilman Reverend Robert Jones for the invocation, please.
That's great. Heavenly God, we thank you so much for the city. Thank you for the opportunity to live in the city of Perry and Father, what we ask that you just fill this place with our hearts and spirit. We might lead, guide, and direct the city in a way that would best Lord by it, in the name of Jesus, we pray.
I'd like to call on Councilman William Jackson, the leadest in the club.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jones. Item four, recognition of a present. Item five, introduction of a new chairman. Ms. Reverend.
Yes, Ms. Reverend, please. Mayor and Council, tonight I had the pleasure of introducing to you is Tiffany Reverend. She's our new accountant at State of Handy Information. Tiffany was born and raised in Cordelia, Georgia, because she was educated in the Chris County School System. She has attended, she received an undergraduate degree from Valhalla State University in administrative services in 2006. Shortly after graduation, she returned to her hometown where she was led to pursue a career in education in order to give back to her community, which had been given to her. She began her as a kindergarten professional, then transitioned to administrative side and became a budget coordinator for the grants department. She has nine years of experience in educational finance. A lot of those years were serving at Chris County School System, for the most recent four, with the Board of Education here as the grants, as the federal grants manager, where she oversaw the federal fund of grants. Throughout the years, Tiffany says her training has helped her to develop her love for finance, which she never knew she had, and is her hope to continue to nurture and improve as she begin her journey here with the city of Perry. Councilwoman, Mayor, Ms. Tiffany Reverend.
Ms. Reverend, welcome to the city of Perry. Thank you for choosing to work here, and I know that you're going to bring all types of wisdom and technological improvements to this older crowd. And I'm not talking about Miss King, I'm talking about these people here. Exemplary, but it's still a great place to work. Thank you. What would you like to say tonight?
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Item four, recognition of some fire personnel. Chief Parker?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to recognize a few of the firefighters tonight. First, I'd like to ask Chief Crumpton to come forward. Chief Crumpton is actually celebrating 15 years with the city of Perry. He's worked hard for the city of Perry to attain the rank of battalion chief. He's a superb leader for the 13 personnel assigned to his shift, and also very well respected by the other members of the department. He manages the department's uniform orders as well as other equipment, and he's also our main coordinator for special events for the city from the fire department side. And he also coordinates emergency management activities and does a great job handling all the FEMA reimbursement paperwork so that we can get reimbursed all the money we're due after every storm. And he does a lot to help to make the Perry Fire Department the best that it can be. And so for that, I want to say thank you to Chief Crumpton, and we have a 15-year pen from the city I'd like to pin on him tonight. So, can we do that real quick here? Time off to hurry. Kind of hard to do it for you, no mates. And thank you again very much for all your hard work. I appreciate it very much.
Congratulations.
Okay, next, for recognition, I have Fire Marshal Paul. Fire Marshal Paul was recently awarded state fire investigator certification. It was a nationally accredited course consisting of 160 hours of classroom and field instruction and no less than 10 fire investigations. Topics for the course included everything from fire and explosion dynamics to fire chemistry, electricity, and hazardous materials, evidence collection, witness interviews, and courtroom testimony. Chief Paul successfully passed the state and pro board written and practical exams, and he was also deputized recently by the state insurance and fire commissioner at the state capitol. And again, he does an excellent job for us as our fire marshal, and I'm very proud to say thank you tonight for that. Appreciate it. Very much. All right. Next, we have two recent promotions that we did, so Sergeant Yoder and Sergeant Redmond come forward, please. First, Sergeant Yoder has been with the department for two and a half years. We actually stole him away from the city of Americas after nine years working there. He assists the department with the design of our burn building, and he lives in Macon County and also volunteers with the local fire department there. So, again, thank you to, and congratulations to the newly promoted Sergeant Jonathan Yoder.
Congratulations.
And then we have Sergeant Redmond. He's also been with the department for two and a half years. We stole him away from Warner Robbins Fire Department after about four years of service there. He assists with logistics and staffing of our many special events and helps out with small engine repair. Austin and his wife Hannah reside on a small farm in Dooley County with their two daughters, Sutton and Sienna. Sergeant Redmond, also noteworthy, was voted by his peers as the Perry Fire Department firefighter of the year for this year for his high quality of work and his dedication to the fire department and the citizens of Perry. And again, congratulations and thank you to Austin Redmond.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Congratulations. Item four C is the review of the April special events. Ms. Reverend.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to take a moment of your time just to review some of the events that we had last month. It did kind of kick off some new events for us that we haven't had in Perry yet, so I just wanted to share with you, if you weren't able to be there, a visual guide through our last Food Truck Friday. And we did have 14 trucks come out and three alcohol vendors, and so we were really excited about how successful that event was. And we've listened to the community, and as I shared with you last time that I was here, we have expanded the footprint of the Food Truck Friday event series, and we have brought in more food trucks, more special beverage vendors, and we're expanding the kids zone, so we do anticipate this Friday to be our biggest and best Food Truck Friday that we've had yet. Another event that we started last month was the Special Needs Egg Hunt. This was really well received by the community despite the fact that we had chilly, rainy, windy weather. We still had over 125 people come out, and I think that the most important takeaway that I personally had from this event was that the people who were there were very expressive about the need for events like this in our community and our area. One encounter in particular was I had a family come up to me and say that this was the first time in 17 years that their child was able to experience an Easter egg hunt because they did not feel comfortable going to traditional egg hunts. So, we received a lot of positive feedback about this event. We did have two working dogs actually come to the event. One was a city of Perry canine police dog, and then one was a special needs therapy dog. But I really feel like this is something that the community responded well to, and I hope that we can continue to grow in the future because the feedback that we've received was just phenomenal. I mean, a lot of encounters brought me into tears. It was not easy to work that event and not cry the whole time. So, that was our special needs recap. And then yoga in the park. We did host our first yoga in the park series. That was held on Saturday, April 30th, 20th, sorry. And we had over 60 people come out for that event. It was free, and the community really responded to that as well. We had lots of people who have never tried yoga before, or people who have not done it for a long time, and this was an opportunity for them to come out and experience our park and also be out with their friends. And we had lots of kids come out, too, so that was exciting to see the diversity and demographics of age and gender. We did have a couple of males come out. We'd love to see some more if anybody would like to come out, but we will be hosting that again in the future. And then just to have on the radar, this weekend, we are going to be having Food Truck Friday, May 10th, from 6 to 9, and then we will be having our first downhill gravity and soapbox race on Saturday, May 18th, in conjunction with the May Day Festival downtown. So, thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to put on these events for the community.
Thank you very much. Very exciting. Item five, report to boards, commissions, and authorities. Five A is an report to the Perry Public Facilities Authority. Councilman Jones?
Yes, I'm Mike McProlly, and I would add, this is a special point for me. On my first job as a young lad visiting the Georgia National Fairgrounds doing manual labor, now clearly I do not need to be doing manual labor. However, from that, I learned the value of hard work and stewardship, Mr. Prolly, so I'd be proud of that.
Welcome back, Mr. Prolly. Come right ahead. Item six, community partner updates. Are there any community partners present who wish to update the seat? Item seven, are citizens within court, are there any citizens present who wish to update the seat? Yes, Mayor?
Yes, good evening. My name is Susan Arts, and I live at 308 Spring Creek Drive, and I've been there about 17 years. I have a concern. In my neighborhood, we have two families. One family has three to four pit bulls. Sometimes they do get loose and they run rampant. The one evening scared me because I have a Westie and I have a little miniature schnauzer. They are fenced in. I have a fence coming right off my kitchen door with a doggy door in it so the dogs can go in and out. It is completely fenced. I have a fenced backyard. My dogs are secured. They are licensed, tagged, and everything. These dogs are not. The one evening, the pit bull, the owner has the pit bull on a, one of those retractable leashes, which is one you should never use on a pit bull, because you need control. That dog came up and attacked my dogs. That's the one police report I did put in. The owner of that dog came up with a club. It looked like bat, so you can't tell me he was out playing baseball that night. That bat was going to be used for something, which, I mean, I'm not a pit bull over, but you don't beat a dog. The other house is almost directly across. It is a charcoled lab. I understand the family has been gotten fined after fine. They just pay their fines and that's it. The dogs run loose, again, comes up my driveway, up to my dogs who are sitting there. Yes, my dogs are going to bark. As I said, the households, from my knowledge, have been told they pay their fines and that's it. Is there nothing on the books that says after several complaints, the dog is, I know at the onetime, I think it's when they attacked somebody and really bite them, they could be taken away? What can be done about it? I mean, these dogs are running in the neighborhood loose. And the other concern I do have, and I hate to be the old rich of the neighborhood, is the kids run up and down the neighborhood with go karts, no helmets on. That's my concern. I can let the go karts go, but no helmets. I've lost and buried three of my children, young children. I don't need to see any of the children lose their lives. And again, I'm sure there are, under the police department or under the city of Perry, there are certain laws about driving up and down with go karts, speeding up and down the streets. And that's all I have to say, and I do appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gilmore, would you please address the various issues for the White Department? Mr. Gilmore? Thank you very much.
And can I just say, excuse me, if either of those dogs attacked my dogs, do I have a right to shoot them with my gun?
I will have to defer to Chief Lynn for that, but I can tell you it is not legal to discharge a firearm within the limits of Perry.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
I said, there is an ordinance on the books that prohibits the discharge of a firearm within the limits of Perry. However, I'll allow Chief Lynn, the expert on this, to address it, please.
It's totally situational, and I'd be happy to sit down and have a
Thank you.
...one-on-one conversation. I think it's probably the best way to address that.
Thank you very much, Chief Lynn. Appreciate it.
Is that everything, ma'am?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was just going to tell
Susan.
Susan, there are ordinances in this county. I serve on the House of County Animal Control Board, and if a dog, we have an ordinance, we have an expanded ordinance in this county where you can declare a dog potentially dangerous based on behavior, running loose, being aggressive. And if a dog is declared that, then they have to be confined. It basically makes the lease law, it gives them credit or teeth into the lease law. So, anyway, there are remedies for your problem.
Okay, thank you so much, sir.
Can I speak?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll be brief. You've got a big, pretty big agenda. So, I'm going to try to talk about climate change, Clean Water Act, EPA, vote controlling property rights, and five minutes. The subject matter is stormwater management, and stormwater management, especially in construction, though with adjacent property owners. You know, just a little over a month ago, you had property owners that were worried about what the construction of a housing project might be for their, you know, because there's already elevation on to their property. It's not rocket science to manage stormwater. There is science, but it's more common sense. Their stormwater management happens after storms. When are storms? Well, there are all, either there's weather stations, there's private weather stations that are networked. It's almost like Google Map traffic for weather. And the city of Perry has some weather station as part of that network. There's 10 in House and County. You can go online, you can look at what happened yesterday, you get real-time information, you can download the history of what's happened over time. Well, if I were managing stormwater and I had a construction project that could potentially impact the adjacent property owners, the first thing I'd do is check things after a storm. And you can do it as easily as to click, you know, on your phone. Anything over half an inch of rainfall in one 24-hour period is considered impotent. And there's not that many of them. I mean, we've only had, in 2019, we've only had 12 events. Well, after those 12 days where we had over half an inch, and one day we had almost two, you need to go out and inspect the place, see what's happened. See what's happening with your silt fences, see what's happening with the stormwater erosion on to other people's property. I can tell you this, if that project is managed as nonchalantly as what's happened out there at our Buzz Grist and out at Summer Branch and, you know, that area, things could be catastrophic for those homeowners. I know they were worried about it, but the more I had to learn about it, self-help, you know, the more worried I am about them. I'm worried about our water, but I'm very worried about those folks. And any other people that are downgraded from the construction project where things could happen now. We don't have rainfall like we had when we were kids. I mean, we've got torrent and flash floods now. You know, it goes from drought to flash flood. Flash flood during those kind of periods did a tremendous amount of erosion on property that's not, that isn't being managed correctly. So, you know, I don't ever like to complain without having a solution. I think that's one of my pet peeves and that. So, here's what I suggest. Number one, when you have a project like that, share with the adjacent property owners the plan, what's going to happen with the stormwater, what has been approved. Y'all are a local authority by virtue of being designated one, so you're our right of defense as citizens. I mean, the only thing that I know for sure that we've been able to do is figure out how to try to think, but we need to learn how to manage, and we need to learn how to manage in a more, I'm not any business, but, you know, there needs to be more of a stick involved in this because whether it's work stoppage or fines, whether the best manner of practices are absolutely ignored, like what's going on out there behind Mount Office School, you can write out there, even somebody that doesn't know any more than I do sees all the, I'd write a book on them today. I mean, it's amazing out there. It's just like there's no management, there's no regulatory, anything going on. So, first thing is, share with the landowners what's going on. Two, inspection should be done after a storm. You know, if there's a storm, go out there the next day and look at what happened. That's what happened. I mean, it only happens periodically when there's a downpour, so that's not, that's not a big deal. And you can do it right online, it's not a big deal to do. And then the other thing is reporting the violations, you know. Right now, this is the way it happens. I'm developing a piece of property, so there's over half an inch of rainfall, so that's going to be it. There are certain things I'm supposed to do, check them, you know, what kind of water am I releasing on to other people's property, and that kind of thing. Guess where the report goes? The self-reporting goes directly to the EPD. And I said, why don't y'all get it here? Well, we don't have to. We don't have to, and it gives excuse to me. I mean, you're not talking about that many reports to look at. That's number one. And it puts the landowner in the posture of having to file Open Records Act or a request to get things that we ought to be able to get, that ought to be emailed to us, actually. I think as an adjacent property owner. And then the fourth thing is, you know, always go out there after a storm, you know. And if you need, you know, if you need a reminder, I'll, Popeyes has plenty of weather dogs you can adopt for the city. If you send them out, they come back down, it's raining, if they come back soon, you ought to plan to do an inspection the next day. And that's all I've got. But it really, we just need, we just need to do a better job of managing those things because there's going to be more projects and more paperwork. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Excuse me. Chief Parker, would this be appropriate time to offer to answer any questions about what I discussed with you earlier?
I think probably.
Okay. This is not why I'm here today, but I just wanted to make myself available. I had made a request to the fire department, particularly led by Chief Parker, and we have discussed a fundraiser that Haley wanted to present in September at the Perry Airport. We already have a date confirmed. We're just looking for a partner for a fire truck, and the city would want to participate in that fundraiser with me. I'm going to share a little bit about that with you, but not going in too much detail. I just wanted to be available to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay. We'll get your name and address.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's Angela Cutie.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address counsel? Item eight is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA Section 36, there's 67A-3C. Item eight A is an abandonment of a portion of meeting street. Staff has requested that we pull this item from the agenda due to a different process that will be followed. So, it's in the center of counsel. That's going to happen at this time. Item eight B is a petition for rezoning application number RZNE 0007-2019. The applicant, Angela J. Cutie, requests the rezoning of property from R-3, multifamily residential district, to OC, office commercial district. The property is located at 900 Ball Street, tax map number 0P0040035,000. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is a request for rezoning. As you've mentioned, the property is located at the corner of Ball Street and Gilmore Street. It is 0.3 acres in size. It currently contains a structure that was built as a single-family residence, which is a little less than 1,200 square feet in size. It has been used as a single-family residence for all of its life, to my knowledge. It has been vacant for the last few months. The applicant is requesting that the zoning be changed from an R3 multifamily residential classification to an OC office commercial classification. The intended use is for office space with the potential to return it to residential use in the future, and the OC district does allow both of those uses. This area of Ball Street is in, I would consider to be a transitional area. Over the last few years, a number of properties, let's see, to the northwest of this property, as you go back towards downtown, have been rezoned from residential use to commercial use. This side, well, actually, both sides of the area being changed from RC, or excuse me, R3 to C3, downtown commercial district. In reviewing the criteria for the property, for the rezoning, staff concluded that the recommendation should be for approval, this one before the planning commission, and they held an informational hearing, and the planning commission also recommends approval of the request for the rezoning to OC office commercial district. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any questions from counsel regarding this item? There are none. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this petition for rezoning application as described?
My name is Angela Cutie, and I am the petitioner for the property to be rezoned, so of course I'll just want to make this thing, but I am, I'm paying for it. No other questions as well.
Thank you. Would anyone else present like to speak for this petition for rezoning as described? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this petition for rezoning as described? I will remind you that we're still in a public hearing. Item eight C is a petition for rezoning application number RZNE-011-2019. The applicant, the city of Perry, requests the rezoning of property from R-1, single-family residential district, GU, government use district. The property is located at 1020 Country Club Road, tax map number 0P0410015,000. Mr. Wood?
Yes, Mayor. Again, a request for rezoning. This is property, this is the 61.36 acres that the city purchased last year, a portion of the former Cherokee Pines Golf Course. Your intention is to use this as a, as open space, park space. The current zoning of the property is R1, single-family residential district. Since the city is the owner, we are requesting that the zoning change to GU, government use district, be consistent with other city-owned properties in the city. In reviewing the standards for considering a zoning change, staff concluded that the property complies with those and recommends approval. Planning commission, following their informational hearing, also recommends approval of the request for the GU zoning classification.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of counsel have any questions, Mr. Wood, at this time? Thank you, sir. Does any member of counsel have any questions regarding Mr. Wood at this time? Hearing none. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this petition for rezoning application by the City of Perry as described? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this petition for rezoning by the City of Perry as described? Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel, item nine is a review of minutes. Item 9A, counsel, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the April 11th, 2019 joint work session with the Perry City Council and the Perry Planning Commission, April 16th, 2019, pre-council meeting, and the April 16th, 2019 council meeting. Please note, the council member, Robert Jones, was absent from the April 16th, 2019 minutes. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented. Second. There's a motion and a second. Are there, is there any additions, deletions, discussion, changes necessary for these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Any extensions?
Yes, Mayor. I will say, in the 16th meeting, we would like to approve approval for the joint work session on 11th.
Thank you. Please let the record indicate, uh, the extension for Mr. Jones for the meeting described and his approval for the meeting described. The motion continues. Thank you. Item 10 is old business. Item 10A are ordinances for the second reading and adoption. 10A1, this is the second reading of an ordinance to control shareable docked and dockless mobility devices, also known as T. Stuves. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, this is a, a modification to the city code, adding two sections, one dealing with shareable dockless mobility devices. These items have, um, had some issues around the nation in, in cities due to them being able to be left where, where the left were they left. And they provided, or caused issues with pedestrians, um, being able to, uh, be able to use the sidewalks adequately. It's also been safety issues, uh, with the, the riders, uh, on sidewalks, in the road, not knowing, not having proper safety equipment, that type of thing. A number of communities across the country have banned them. Um, and we are proposing as well to ban them with the provision that, um, that if someone, some company comes in and wants to consider Perry, we will work with them to see if we can come up with appropriate regulations for that. At the last, uh, at your last meeting where we presented this, you also suggested that we should look at docked devices. While they are not, um, have not presented the same safety concerns that dockless devices have, we felt that it was appropriate to ban those as well. Um, again, with the provision that we will work with anyone who comes in to determine if we can establish appropriate regulations for those. So, both docked and dockless devices are proposed to be prohibited in the City of Perry at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of counsel have any questions regarding this item? Mayor? Yes. We need to change this based on recent discussion with the City Attorney's Office to the first reading because the amendment, it goes back to an issue with our charter. Very good. Therefore, this is, will be considered a first reading for an ordinance for consideration. Therefore, there is no action required by counsel at this time. Item 11 is any other old business. Item 11A is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. 11B is any other old business from council members? Ms. Pine and Grace?
Mr. Jones, yes.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Huh? Mr. Jackson? Mr. King? Item 11C is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 11D is any other old business from the assistant city manager? Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Even though you weren't on the agenda. And item 11D is any other old business from the city attorney, Ms. Newby?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 12 is new business. 12A are matters that have been referred from the May 6th, 2019 work session last night, of May 7th, 2019, pre-council meeting, as held at 5:00 PM this afternoon. We do have one item from last night's work session. Item 12A1, we're being asked to approve an information technology managed service. Mr. Smith?
Mayor, Mayor and counsel, uh, following up on a conversation last night, a presentation pertaining to the city's technology situation, uh, we have to forward you tonight for your consideration an agreement with Heartbreak to move forward with managed IT services. Uh, this would go into effect should you choose to do so, uh, within the next 30 days. And they will provide, uh, the whole encompassing range of services that we require the city to perform operations and that type of thing. Uh, if you have any questions you might have.
Any questions of Mr. Smith regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve this information technology managed service with Heartbreak, subject to final review by the city attorney as described. Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12B, ordinances for first reading and introduction. Item 12B1 is the first reading of an ordinance, rezoning property from R-3, multifamily residential district to OC, office and commercial district. The property is located at 900 Ball Street, with a tax map of a Creewood District red. Anything further to add, Mr. Wood?
No, sir.
Thank you. Since this is a first reading, introduction, no action is required by counsel at this time. Item 12B2 is the first reading of an ordinance that rezones property from R-1, single-family residential district to GU, government use district. The property is located at 1020 Country Club Road, with a previous tax map already discussed. Anything further to add, Mr. Wood?
No, sir.
Thank you. Because this is the first reading and introduction, no action is required by counsel at this time. Item 12C is the award bid. 12C1 is bid number 2019-24 for light towers. Our staff has asked for this item to be tabled for further information. At this time, I will entertain a motion to table this item. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12C2 is bid number 2019-25 for flash pads to use to. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and counsel, uh, this is, this bid award is for solicitation number 2019-25, which is the Phase 2 of the Creewood Flash Pad. Um, we contacted six vendors directly as part of this solicitation, and also posted this, uh, bid upon the City of Perry's website and the Georgia Department of Regulatory Registry. Uh, we received one responsive bid for this, uh, for the solicitation. It was Lanier Plans Inc. doing business as per cat in the amount of $122,121.30. It is staff's recommendation that we award this bid to Lanier Plans Inc. in that amount. Mayor, any questions you may have on that?
Any questions regarding this item? Hearing no questions. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve this bid number 20,000, 2019-25 for the amount specified by Mr. Wood as described. Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12C3 is bid number 2019-27 for a wall mounted heat pump. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. The last bid we're asking, uh, Mayor and counsel, to award denied is 2019-27 for exterior wall mounted heat pump. Uh, as part of the solicitation, we directly contacted eight vendors who are registered with the city, uh, and we posted the bid on the City, City Perry's website and Georgia Department of Regulatory Registry. We received four bids ranging from $6,745 to $11,225.79. It is staff's recommendation that we award this bid to Basil Plumbing, Heating and Airing, which was the low bid of $6,745. I can entertain any questions you may have.
Questions from counsel? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve this bid number 2019-27 for the wall mounted heat pump as described. Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12B are resolutions for consideration and adoption. 12B1 has been, uh, item has been pulled from the agenda. We addressed it earlier in the meeting. Item 12B2 is a resolution declaring certain vehicles and equipment surface. Ms. King?
Hi, thank you, Mayor and counsel. Um, the resolution that you have before you is to declare, uh, six vehicles surplus, um, ranging from, um, from the Fire Department, uh, Community Development, Leisure Services and Soundlet Waste Departments. Uh, the vehicles are in, uh, disrepair, some are very high mileage. Um, two transmission issues and one with a blown engine.
Ms. King, does any member of counsel have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the resolution declaring certain vehicles and equipment surface as described. Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12E is the selection of a voting delegate for the Georgia Municipal Association annual membership business meeting, attended in June every year. With counsel's concurrence, I would proffer myself as the voting delegate with the mayor pro tempore, Walker, as an alternate, should you so approve. At this time, I will entertain a motion for those two delegates to be approved. There's a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12F is for us to consider an amendment to an owner-engineer agreement for a gas main upgrade.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, in your board pack, you have a copy of an amendment with Kekin Wood. Purpose of this amendment is to allow this engineering firm to proceed with the upgrade of our gas feeder main. The funding for that will come from, uh, the Perry Public Facilities Authority. Purpose of this amendment is to provide the engineering firm to prepare and handle the bid specifications and also the construction management of the project. And we recommend to you to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of counsel have any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the amendment for the owner-engineer agreement for the gas main upgrade as described. Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12G is a request for an approval for a master agreement with ESG Engineering to provide GIS services. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, our contract with our current, uh, GIS provider on, is ending later this month. We are recommending that we not review with that company. Um, we are requesting, uh, recommend approval of this master agreement with ESG Engineering to provide those services. We believe that they will be able to provide better service to us. They're local, outmaken, and should be able to address our needs better than, than our current provider.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Are there any questions by counsel regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the master agreement with ESG Engineering to provide GIS services as described. Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Subject to the City Attorney's Office.
Correct. That's correct. Um, who made the original motion? Do you agree to the amendment for this to be subject to the city attorney's final review?
Yes.
And the second was Mr. King, is that right?
Yes.
Do you also agree?
I agree.
Thank you. Does any member of counsel have any questions regarding the motion that it is now subject to final review by the city attorney? Hearing no discussion at this time. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Item 12H, our special event applications, 12H1, has to do with the Downtown Merchants Council Wine Tasting. Ms. Turpin?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Merchants Council tonight to present their special events application. Uh, this first one will be for the, for the wine tasting that they will be hosting downtown in Perry on Friday, June 7th. And the two items that they are requesting is first and foremost a fee waiver for hosting the event, and secondly, street closures, um, to take place from 2:00 to 9:00 PM on Friday, June 7th. And the street closures that they are requesting is Carroll Street between Jernigan and Washington Street, as well as Ball Street between Commerce and Main Street.
Any questions of Ms. Turpin regarding this item from counsel? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the request of the Perry Chamber of Commerce for the Downtown Merchants Council Wine Tasting event as described. Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 12H2 is a Chamber of Commerce request for the Independence Day Parade. Ms. Turpin?
Thank you. And I'm also, uh, asking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce tonight for their special event application request to approve their Independence Day Parade, which is scheduled to be held on June 29th, 2019. The event will take place from 10:00 AM till 11:30 AM. And they are requesting first and foremost a fee waiver for the parade, and then also street closures. The street closures requested are the parade route number one. Uh, if anyone is unfamiliar with that route, I can, uh, list all the streets. For time's sake, it is parade route one. And that would be winding up at 8:00 AM with rolling closures starting at 10:00 AM as directed by police. And, and the third item that they are requesting is permission to utilize the city tram to hold the hometown heroes as they go throughout the parade.
Thank you. Any member of counsel have any questions regarding this request? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the Perry Chamber of Commerce's request for the various street closures and other items for the Independence Day Parade as described. Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, senior counsel member items. Ms. Pine and Grace? Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
No, sir.
Mr. King? What do you have? You have a presentation to give. At this time, I would request that counsel join me in front of the counter, which this thing is called.
On behalf of the city of Perry, I was able to go down to St. Sound this week to receive this award from the, uh, Minnesota Gas Authority of Georgia. And we were able to, they presented this award with, uh, HEAT, which stands for Heat Energy Assistant Team. And I found out that the City of Perry have been helping, uh, low-income people in 2018, from a thousand to 5,000 people, with their heating assistance. And I think it's an honor that we were able to receive this award. It's a blessing, so I present this to the city.
Thank you very much.
Hey, y'all look this way. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. King, for your efforts in representation for the city at the authority meeting. Do you have anything further?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore? Do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Newby.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 14, the Department of Kids or Staff items. We will start with the office of the city clerk, Ms. Morris. Thank you, from Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. King?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you from Community Development, Mr. Wood.
Nothing further to add.
Thank you from Department Economic Development, Ms. Hart.
Yes, I do have one item. Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the community. The Downtown Development Authority is hosting a rural zone lunch and learn on May 22nd at 11:30 at the Perry Arc Center. This is a program that we have in place for another, almost three, a little over three and a half years, and it's for downtown development, property owners or tenants if they're doing a rehabilitation with job creation, and we want private property owners, tenants, CPAs or attorneys that do the tax credit programs to come for free lunch catered by barbecue monsters and learn from the Department of Community Affairs, state experts on these programs, and to educate the community on why these tax credits should be taken advantage of now so that we can digitally spark the downtown development that we're seeing. So, I invite you all to come. You have a flyer in your box, and please RSVP if you do intend to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm the Department of Fire and Services Chief Parker.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council, just like to make a, some information tonight that Country Financial, one of our local businesses here in the city, started a campaign where they're donating $1,500 a year to a public safety agency, and this year, they chose the Perry Fire Department to be the beneficiary of that, and Ms. Wendy Johnson, our local agent for Country Financial, came over today and presented us with a check for $1,500, and on behalf of the city and the Perry Fire Department, we'd like to say thank you to her. She cannot be here tonight, but we thank her for that generous gift that she gave the Perry Fire Department, so I'd like to say thank you.
Congratulations. From the Police Department, Chief Lynn.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, council, and the audience, I've got some calendar dates that I want to share with you. They're all related to Law Enforcement Memorial Week, which is next week, but as a kickoff to that, this coming Saturday, May 11th, from 9:00 to 11:00, we've got Coffee with a Cop downtown at Bodega Brew, so if you want to come meet us in a different way than maybe you usually do, not saying that's a bad, come down and have coffee or tea or whatever your favorite choice is at Bodega Brew. Following that, on Monday, the local Houston County Law Officer Memorial Service is held at 6:00 o'clock on Monday at Southside Baptist Church in Monroe, Robbins, and that's where Houston County agencies come together with honor guards, and they, they honor every officer who has fallen in line of duty for the state of Georgia during the previous year. And so, that's a, it's a very solemn occasion, it's, it's generally, I mean, it's, it's well done, and it's, you know, if you've not been to one, it's probably something you ought to put on your bucket list. National Law Officer Memorial Day is Wednesday, May 15th, and that day, flags are to be flown at half-staff by presidential decree. I think it goes back to President Kennedy. It's been around a long time, and on that day, they'll have the, the National Memorial Service in Washington, DC to honor officers all across the nation, and officers from all 50 states and several foreign countries typically attend that. And there's usually a really big Canadian contingent that goes to. I went to place a fellow officer on the wall some years ago, and it's just, it's hard to describe that in the scope and the majesty of the event. We will have some Perry officers at that event to experience that personally. I think it's good for their development in the profession. So, just wanted to share the calendar events for everybody. They're obviously all open to the public, and, well, the ones just lower your, like to half-staff, so you can do that on your own, but we'd love for you to come down and join us, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. From the Media Services Department.
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Item 15, the General Public Items. Does any member of the general public wish to address council at this time? Thank you. Item 16, the Mayor Items. There's been an awful lot of information that has been referred tonight, or there's quite a bit going on around, in and around the city of Perry. Would also give a word of caution, school is almost out again. Please be careful. Our children will be, I hate to use the word roaming the streets, but that's what I was accused of back when I was little. They don't do that anymore. I'm not sure what they call it, but they're going to be out and about. Please pay attention. Please. Always be safe. As Chief Lynn said, all our meetings are open for the public. I would encourage your participation. We always like input from our community partners in the general public. If there is nothing else to come before us tonight, thank you for your interest and your participation. We stand deterred.